Welcome to Unraveling Education, the podcast that's part storytelling, part information, and part whodunit. We'll be investigating the underlying issues harming the public education system and identifying the key players involved. Hello again, unravelers. Danielle Ford here, former trustee of CCSD, the fifth largest district in the nation. In this episode of Unraveling Education, you will learn the entire history of school boards, and it is way more exciting than it sounds like. It is wild. You might remember from the episode Storytime Diary of a New School Board Trustee that the roles of the school board are to: set the vision for the district, oversee the spending of taxpayer dollars, and to hire a superintendent to manage the operations of the district and to hold that person accountable. This episode will cover how local school boards developed and why they are so important to your individual rights. I'll begin to explain how all public school boards in America are under attack. Then I'll fill you in on the current state of the Clark County School Board and the recent events that have chipped away at the board's power even more. This episode was so difficult to put together because there is so much interesting and scandalous stuff that I could include that is related to the history of public education, but I think it makes more sense to first cover the history of school boards thoroughly, which honestly I find fascinating. And that's actually another reason why I struggled with this episode. I wasn't sure how fascinating this content would be to other people outside of my head. So if you make it all the way through and find that you enjoyed it, or you learned something, please let me know in the YouTube comments. And even if you hated it, or you were super bored, you can let me know by leaving a cricket emoji in the YouTube comments. It's okay, I can take it. All right then, let's get into it. Our story begins in the 1500s with the discovery of America. We all remember learning that in 1492, Columbus sailed the ocean blue and, you know, found land. And despite that land already being home to millions of humans, he was like, "This is my land that I discovered." I'm using this example to establish a timeline, not because the story that was taught to us all about Columbus was in any way true. Now let's fast forward through the blood baths, the conquesting of Native Americans, and the starting of the slave trade, to when the first settlers arrived on the Mayflower and the 13 colonies were formed and everyone celebrated. At that point, it had been more than 100 years since, you know, Columbus discovered America. I'm not going to go any more into this, but for a reenactment/ how it should have ended, check out the Thanksgiving scene in The Addams Family Values. Now let's learn what early American education was like in the 1600s. At first, the children from rich families of New England colonies received private schooling. Parents would either send their children overseas to England or Scotland to receive education, and by children, I mean sons, or they would hire private tutors for their children, sons, or they would homeschool them. As the colonies grew, the individual towns were mandated to build schools. They used township funds and the labor of townspeople or laymen to build the first one-room schoolhouses. But despite these schools being built by the town and for the town, education there was not available to everyone. The children of rich families were invited to attend, and those families were sent a bill. They were essentially using public money to build private schools. For a long time, the rich colonials had their private schoolhouses, their private tutors, and their private boarding schools, while different types of public education emerged for everyone else. By the mid-1600s, there were various types of education taking place for boys. The colonies were all operating independently, and a majority were still heavily influenced by the Church of England. Public education was put under the scope of the church, and their religious leaders were the teachers. It was required for all parents and masters to send their children and the children of their servants to church buildings where they would receive both academic and religious instruction. Some of the colonies allowed a company to govern local education. That company would pay for the school building and for the school masters to educate the children, sons, of their workers. For children of indigent parents and orphans, there were no public school options available. These children were apprenticed to artisans and craftsmen for free labor. There was a law that said that the craftsman must also instruct the apprentice in reading and writing, but no one was really making sure that that happened. Now it feels like I'm forgetting some humans. We covered the rich folks, the working men, servants, indigenous people. Who am I forgetting? Oh, that's right, slaves. There were zero education options available for enslaved Black Americans. In fact, it was illegal to help an enslaved person learn to write or read. Obviously, there's a lot more that could be said about this, and we will certainly cover it in future episodes, but remember, the purpose of this episode is to learn about the history of school boards and why they were formed. So that is what public education was. It was unfair, and it was unstructured, and it continued for decades as governments grew and expanded. In the mid-1600s, the hot topic at town hall meetings was public schools. There was a demand for unity in education among all the colonies. They all wanted that, and for all children to learn to read. But there were differing opinions about who should be in charge. Should it be the churches, the companies, or the government? Eventually, some town officials in Massachusetts determined that since they were already doing government, they would just do schools too. They titled themselves Selectmen, and this is the earliest type of school board. They passed a law that said that every town with 100 families must have at least one school, and it would be overseen by the Selectmen. They named the law "The Old Deluder Satan Act" because Satan's goal was to keep men from reading the scriptures. Whatever works, I guess. That law is now known as the Massachusetts Law of 1647. Over the next 100 years, public education was anything but united. There was major hostility between governments, private schools, and religious schools. The biggest factor contributing to the controversy was the fact that religious schools were receiving public funds. More and more children began attending schools, and the increasing demand was too much for the Selectmen to manage. Temporary committees were appointed to assist with finding teachers and building schoolhouses. As schools increased, the committees were made permanent. It became their role to recruit schoolmasters, provide lodging for them, and keep the schools heated and maintained. Over time, the role of that committee expanded. Members were responsible for visiting schools, ensuring that instruction was being given and that students were learning, and keeping the classrooms supplied with quills and ink. Textbooks became a thing in 1750. At this point, the Old Deluder Satan Act and the school board-like committee had been around for over a century. These new textbooks were not cheap, and the school committee had additional responsibilities now of selecting books and raising funds from the town to purchase them. Committee members also began to reward competent schoolmasters and fire inefficient ones. They also acted as the first truancy officers by seeking out parents who failed to or refused to send their kids to school and by imposing fines on them. As the population in cities and rural areas grew, it became difficult for one committee to travel and manage all of the schoolhouses. This spurred the formation of the school district system. Members were appointed to the committees of all the new school districts. Over the next couple decades, several legislators at different times attempted to replace the committee with school boards, referring to them as a Board of Guardians, guardians who were to be elected by the people and whose job it was to hire teachers and pay their salaries out of taxes laid upon by the inhabitants. But the concept of people actually electing committee members was wild at the time. Those legislators with foresight were deemed too radical, and the bills failed in each state that they were presented in. Then a little something called the American Revolution happened. We've all seen Hamilton. We know how that went down. Battle of Yorktown, 1781. We've had quite a run. Immigrants. We get the job done. America gained its freedom from British rule and religion. Nothing about public education was written into the Constitution. And that's not because the founding fathers didn't support it, but because they cared so much about public education that they had not settled on any decisions yet. They debated each other about public education for years. Their concerns were not as much about instruction, but about who should hold the power over what children will be able to learn and do. It was Thomas Jefferson who convinced his founding father friends that the power over educational decisions and policy should belong to the local communities. His reasoning was that with every changing federal administration would come a shift to the curriculum based solely on political agendas, rather than on the welfare of the children and the future of America. Jefferson pitched the concept of local government schools, which would allow voters to elect a group of people from their community to run the schools and guard public funds. It was the exact same radical idea of guardians that had failed over and over decades earlier. And when I meet Thomas Jefferson, I'm gonna compel him to include women in the sequel. Work. Three points if you know who said that. No cheating. Put your score in the comments. Now, it was pretty chaotic there for a minute with different committees having different rules for governing districts while all these adjustments were being made. States and districts were trying to figure out how to add in all these new school governments. It wasn't until 1817 that there was the first record of a school board functioning as intended, that had publicly elected people on it that had control of taxpayer funds. That was in the city of Boston. From there, it was the wild, wild west of school boards. Literally. There were no universal rules or regulations. How many school days, how many hours, which children were allowed to attend, the qualifications of teachers. Everything was determined by individual school districts. And districts right next door to each other were operating in vastly different ways. Gradually, state constitutions and federal legislation began to set standards for quality and uniformity of instruction for all boards to follow, while allowing the boards to remain locally elected and operated. For the next few decades, all school districts were working out the kinks. People began to realize a need for school board members to have specific qualifications, like actual knowledge and education and experience teaching students, but with boards being publicly elected, there was no way to ensure that. On average, school boards had about 12 members, but some had up to 50 because they just kept electing people until they got some qualified ones. Then boards were like, "We need a better system." So the boards began hiring education specialists to work alongside them and lead departments within the school district. Next, they hired district managers who also had a background in education to keep all of the departments organized and functioning together. Although school boards could operate however they wanted to at this point within the parameters set by the state and the federal government, they all were pretty much doing the same things. They most likely were communicating with each other and sharing best practices. The elected boards organically became much smaller because they now had a team of education experts to help them run the school districts. So check this out. In the years 1836 and 1837, a handful of superintendents were appointed by school boards in large cities of different states to replace district managers. The timeframe is so small that it's undetermined who did it first. This caused a lot of confusion and controversy because the role of superintendent had never existed in the educational landscape until now. But because these boards did it, other boards started doing it. And then because everyone was doing it, it just became the norm for each district to have a few board members and also a superintendent. And this piques my interest quite a bit, okay? Firstly, because what if any school boards had decided, like, "You know what? We actually don't need a superintendent. Maybe we want to test a team of three teachers working together to manage the district and see how that works." Or maybe we want to name the title something else besides superintendent. Like, there was no room for that because it just became the thing to have a superintendent. It was expected. But the only thing that had been deemed absolutely essential to protect education and public funds was the school board. Thomas Jefferson was not like, you know, "To protect education and communities from national political agendas, we will need a Board of Guardians elected by the people, for the people. Oh, and this other random person too, that will be there and also do the same things as the board and maybe even have more power than the board in the future." Okay, that was not Jefferson's intent. Now, I haven't been able to find many details about these early superintendents, but honestly, like, what are the odds? Tell me, what are the odds of this position popping up out of nowhere in several states at the same time and with trustees on each of the boards who didn't know each other at the time and didn't have the internet and communication tools that we have now, all citing the same reasons for needing a superintendent? "To execute my duties fully would take two full working days, and I just don't have that kind of time." Hmm, I'm skeptical. Like, I have questions, okay? So it's the 1840s. Public education was rising, and so was the growth of cities. School districts in big cities now found themselves in big business. So they started patterning education based on the corporate form of an organization. The school board became the legislative body making policies, and the superintendent was considered the CEO, responsible for the administration and operations of the school district. Discussions began to emerge in business circles, and questions were presented to legislators about, "Should the pattern of having schools controlled by locally elected people just be abandoned, and the power given to one person, the superintendent as the expert? Should we do that? Is that a good idea?" That was nearly 200 years ago, and yet that question continues to be brought up by organizations of superintendents and companies that do business with superintendents. And every time, the public has responded with a clear "No." But despite hearing "no" for nearly 200 years, they keep asking, like, "Bro, it might be time to have a conversation about consent. We said no. No means no." And that leads me to something else that I find fascinating. Throughout all the changes with education, society, law, and regardless of personal opinions, events, the news, the public, the general public agrees on this issue. The general consensus has never been... Yeah, that's fine. We don't want the choice to elect folks that are going to act as trustees on our behalf. Who needs, you know, guardians of the community's education and public funds? We'd rather just let someone else do it, you know, perhaps someone that a large corporation chooses to appoint. Like, literally, nobody wants that. But they keep asking. They just keep asking. No. So throughout those 200 years, school board trustees and legislators and the public heard the argument for education experts to be involved in governing. So they allowed superintendents to delegate aspects and authority of their role to mid-level administrators and expand the system. First, there were principals, and then vice principals, curriculum coordinators, teaching strategists, deputy superintendents, associates, consultants, legal experts, numerous superintendent-appointed committees. The list goes on and on, and that's how the administration portion of school districts were formed. So this is where we're going to end our story about the history of school boards, but we are not done yet. I have some things to say. I also have a few important updates for you and some action steps. Before I continue on, Unraveling Education is fueled by supporters and sponsors. If you found value in this episode, please consider making a donation at unravelingeducation.com/sponsor, where you will find several easy ways to do so. Everything helps and is greatly appreciated. Now, back to my regularly scheduled opinions. So, superintendents have a lot of power, and I'm not necessarily saying that's a bad thing, but that is the fact of the matter. If a superintendent is doing great things, working well with the board, making solid fiscal decisions, and is beloved by their community, then wonderful. But imagine that that's not the case. Imagine that CEOs of huge companies were somehow able to get a person of their choosing hired as superintendent. If the superintendent had promised to follow their orders, adopt their policies, buy their stuff, who would actually hold the power? Who would actually be running the school district? And as you think on that, here are some more questions to ponder. What would that kind of school district look like? Would most of the spending go to the local economy, or would it go to outside vendors? How would a superintendent, who was essentially a billionaire's puppet, communicate with the media? How would that superintendent treat the local community? And most importantly, who could stop them if they wanted to? So something that has been blowing my mind as I have been organizing this episode and getting deep into the timeline is the fact that public education, the system as we know it, has only been around about 200 years. And that seems like a lot, but also think how fast a year goes by. It took 300 years just to get to the point of creating a cohesive public education system that everyone could agree upon. Education went from schoolhouses to this new radical idea of school boards, to boards consisting of 50 people, to hiring experts to help lead, to superintendents sprouting out of nowhere, to districts operating like a business, and then the creation of hundreds of positions under the superintendent across the entire country, which is huge, and in a very short amount of time. But yeah, so many people are like, "It's not working. The system is broken." Burn it to the ground. Of course, it's not working. It's barely gotten started. And included in that short amount of time, you know, the 200 years of public education as we know it, there's also population growth, major technological advancements, huge societal changes, the formation of teacher and labor unions, the desegregation of schools, state and federal mandates on public education, like standardized testing, new laws to protect students, you know, like the Individuals with Disabilities Act, and having to continuously adapt the whole system to keep up with the internet, cybersecurity attacks, and then a worldwide pandemic. Like, that's a lot of stuff in a very short amount of time. And while many people have been working and testing and tweaking and fighting to build an education system that works, many other people have been sabotaging it this entire time. Trust that we're going to talk a lot more about the people who are sabotaging public education in the future, but right now, I'm just going to give you one example of this happening. A favorite method of sabotage by these folks is the spreading of false narratives in an attempt to get the general public to turn on public education in general. And it's effective. Here's one example, okay? You may have heard that public education was created during the Industrial Revolution to produce factory workers. It's possible that you know that to be true, but you can't really remember where you heard it. I used to believe this too, and I can remember reading it and hearing it over a decade ago from a lot of personal development authors, thought leaders, and entrepreneurs whom I respect. But now I know that they're wrong. And when I think back, I'm like, "Why did I just accept that as the truth?" I can remember being told that, but I do not remember hearing any actual facts around it. So I went looking for facts, and here is what I discovered. In 1805, which was during the Industrial Revolution, and in this timeframe, it was when publicly elected school boards were beginning to form, and it was the Wild West of school boards. Well, there were many forms of schooling attempted, and most of them did not last long because education was becoming regulated. So at this time, a bunch of wealthy businessmen formed the New York Public School Society. They raised a bunch of money, saying that they were going to provide education for poor children. And everyone was like, "Aww, take my money." The school used what was called the Lancasterian method. Lancasterian. I think I'm saying that right. In that model, one master can teach hundreds of students in a single room. The master would give a lesson to the oldest students, and then those students would pass that lesson down to students who were slightly younger than them, and so on and so on, until the youngest students had received that lesson. The purpose of these schools was to teach obedience and discipline, which were qualities that factory owners wanted in their workers. They were able to open four of these schools. One of them had 500 students in it, before the regulations of the new government caught up with them and the Board of Education ended up taking them over. So yes, it is true that one rogue group of industrialists attempted to fund the education of poor children in a way that appeared to be helping the children, but would only be helping their bottom line. But then the actual public education stepped in and was like, "Stop." But somehow, the narrative was passed through a game of telephone that the current public education system was intended to operate like that. That is not how the public school system operates. That's never been how the public school system operates, but this idea makes people really mad. So it has been purposefully told over and over, even though it is an absolute lie. And that is the definition of propaganda. The spreading of rumors, half-truths, or lies to influence public opinion in helping or injuring an institution, cause, or a person. So spreading that propaganda injures the public education system and helps those who are opposed to a public education system. So from now on, if you hear anybody mention the Industrial Revolution and public education in the same sentence, you can be like, "Nope. That is misinformation. Stop spreading propaganda. You are not helping." Now, I think that we can all agree that public education is far from being perfect, and there is room to disagree for sure about why it's not perfect, but really, why is anybody surprised? It would be an absolute miracle if public education was perfect or even operating smoothly in only 200 years. We are still in beta mode. We are still in the history of public education and the history of school boards, right? In 200 years, your children's children's great-grandchildren will be watching a hologram or reading a book from their contact lens, or inserting a chip directly into their brain to learn the history of school boards, and they're going to be learning about right now, the things that are happening with school boards right now. And they're going to be like, "Whoa, this is wild." And then one of them will make a podcast about it. And listen, listen, I swear to you, if in 200 years from now, I find out that certain people are still trying to get rid of the public's right to elect guardians of education, and everybody has not yet collectively told them to kick rocks, I will be so pissed. Like, that could legit cause me to haunt someone. So look, okay? If you are on a school board, employed by a school board or a school district, planning on running for school board, involved in school board campaigns, voting for school board members, or using your voice in any way to affect school boards, then you are part of history. We are still in the early stages of public education, and everything that we do matters. Now let's hone in on the present state of school boards. I hope by now I have convinced you that to attack the power of a locally elected school board is to attack voters and their local communities. The unfortunate truth is that coordinated attacks are happening to public school boards in many districts across the country, and a lot of them have been successful. Billionaires who aim to control the future of education are giving lots of money to politicians in various government positions in exchange for replacing publicly elected school board members with appointed members of their choosing. They also fund the campaigns of school board candidates and give them cushy jobs and perks in exchange for hiring superintendents of their choosing and then giving the superintendent their power. In Nevada, for decades, individual legislators have been drafting bills that would change the makeup of the school board from publicly elected trustees to appointed ones. These bills didn't really get much attention from the full legislature, and they would be dropped early, but they have been making more headway. In 2022, appointed school boards were closer than ever. A bill was drafted, and many pro-public education advocates, including myself, spoke against it.
My name is Danielle Ford. I'm currently an elected CCSD trustee, but I am here speaking as an individual concerned citizen. There are so many people that care deeply, and everybody in this room is here because they care about education. Local school boards were created initially to ensure that the political swings every election cycle at the federal and at state levels do not trickle into the schools, and so that local communities would always have a voice in how education was being delivered to their kids. Before considering taking away the people's right to elect their local officials, mandate that trustees receive direct training annually from the National School Boards Association, which should include federally obligated duties so that trustees know whether or not what is being told to them regarding their role is congruent with how all other boards are operating, and so that trustees know that they're making decisions that reflect the intent of the Constitution. There is absolutely no data that shows that either a fully appointed or a hybrid school board is more functional than a elected one. There are better solutions to consider before deciding to change from elected to appointed school boards and deciding to take away the people's power. Thank you.
It's important to note that it was the Clark County Teachers Union, CCEA, specifically their executive director, John Bellardita, who tried to push this bill through. This bill would have changed the makeup of the board from seven elected trustees to four and completely changed all of the voter lines. It would have added three appointed trustees, one of which was to be appointed by John Bellardita. Now, teachers' unions are usually pro-publicly elected school boards. Both the Nevada State Education Association and the National Education Association of Southern Nevada showed up to speak against this bill. Remember towards the end of the Storytime episode Diary of a New School Board Trustee, when I told you that I thought that CCEA was sus and that I would provide you with examples in the future? Well, here is one of them. So that bill did not progress, but there was an appetite from the community to get a few appointed people onto the board to find out why the trustees don't have any power and what is even happening. Nobody had any faith in the board members or the superintendent at this point, and I don't blame them. So what the legislature did instead was to leave the makeup of the seven publicly elected board members alone, but add four non-voting trustees to the board to be appointed by the four largest local municipalities in Clark County: the Clark County Commission, the Las Vegas City Council, the City of North Las Vegas, and the City of Henderson. So even though these members wouldn't have the ability to vote on items during board meetings, they would still receive training. They would attend the briefings. They'd hear all the information in the closed sessions, be able to request information, participate in discussions taking place during board meetings. They would be able to take information back to their municipality and also be a voice for that municipality in the same way as elected trustees are supposed to be a voice for the voters. First thing in January 2024, those new trustees, the appointed non-voting members, were sworn in. Now, I told you in that Storytime episode that the superintendent and the majority of the board are currently out of control. They're reckless. They make up rules. They do whatever they want, regardless of optics or any unintended consequences, right? So it should come as no surprise to you that the first thing that the superintendent and those trustees did was to change the policies in a way that would take away the little bit of power that those newly appointed trustees had. The new trustees will not be able the little bit of power that those newly appointed trustees had. The new trustees will not be able to bring any business to the board. They can't question any purchasing at public meetings. They can't request for items to be polled. They can't make any motions to, like, table something or modify a motion that another trustee made. They can't do nothing. They can't do anything. So now, the assembly members who passed that bill and the councils who appointed them are pissed, as they should be. We will cover this more as it evolves, but I wanted to include it because, like I said earlier, this is still the history of school boards. That history is happening now. The things that are happening to school boards right now will shape the future of public education, and it's gonna go one of two ways. It's gonna be that we're able to keep boards publicly elected, or we're gonna lose it to big business. And whichever thing happens is gonna shape the future of education for all of our children. I know that this is a lot to take in, but if you are feeling unraveled by it, like I am, and you are wanting to be part of the solution, here are some action steps I recommend. Start paying attention to who supports publicly elected school boards and who doesn't. Research your local school board members and check for any large donations made to their campaigns by billionaires, or if their employers benefit by contracting with the school district or by the school district failing. Inform others in your community about the threat to school boards and your findings. Consider running for school board or getting involved in the campaigns of pro-public education candidates who will fight for the school board to keep their power. For those of you in Clark County, we will be covering the upcoming school board elections deeply, and there will be ways for you to get involved in school board campaigns. If you are not in Clark County, then I would love to know where you are watching or listening from, and what the state of your local school board is. Is your school board elected, appointed, some sort of hybrid, like ours is now? Like, what is the HAPS? Let me know in the YouTube comments. In the next Storytime episode, I will walk you through how I started to learn that these things were happening, and what I found when I began investigating my fellow board members and the previous board members. It's gonna be a good one. It takes a lot to produce an episode of unraveling education. It's all made possible by donations and sponsorships, and we could sure use the help. To make a donation or become a sponsor, visit unravelingeducation.com/sponsor. And if you know any pro-public education organizations who might be interested in sponsoring a future episode or becoming a partner of the show, please send us their way or vice versa. Before you go, don't forget to share and subscribe. Sharing the episodes on social media really helps, and if you would like to go above and beyond, you can leave a rating and/or review wherever you listen to your podcasts. Thank you so much for tuning in, and I will see you next time. Keep pulling those threads. The $10. Founding father without a father got a lot farther by being a lot smarter, by working a lot harder, by being a self starter. Alexander Cattleton. What did they say to you to get you to sell New York City down the river? Alexander Cattleton.